Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May 3, 2017, meeting of the Danville County Planning and Zoning Commission. We thank you for your attendance and taking interest in the community and the activities of planning and zoning. As tradition, we'll begin our meeting with prayer. If you bow with me, please. Our God and Father in heaven, we thank thee for this most beautiful day and all the blessings of it. We thank thee for this community we live in, this country we live in, the freedoms we enjoy, the safety and protection you've granted to us. We thank you for being God, the almighty and powerful God, the creator, provider, and sustainer of all. And knowing you are that God gives us great joy, peace, and comfort, we thank you for that. We pray for our men and women who are in the services, continue to defend and fight for our freedoms, that you will watch over and care for and protect them, and let those conflicts come to a resolution and bring them back to their loved ones as soon as possible. We pray that you would be with each of us today as we make decisions that affect this community and the individuals involved, and we pray these decisions will be best for all that are involved. We thank you for the health you've given us and letting us live another day on your grand and glorious earth. Continue to watch over and care for us, guide, guard, direct us in all things. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Item number one, approval amendments of April 5, 2017. Do you have a motion? We approve.
I'll second.
Suzy seconds. Question, discussion on approval of amendments, 2017, April 5. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. No old business under new business, minor plat, stone and Ella Mills Clay, Yates Road, Boyle County. Any issues with this, Paula?
I'm gonna let Jenny. Jenny conducted technical review last week, and I'm gonna let Jenny address those issues on the plats today.
Okay. Thank you.
But, no, all changes were made, and the owner's signatures were brought this morning, so everything is correct.
Okay. Morning, Dale.
Morning.
Anything you want to share with us on this, or tell us what you're doing?
We're just creating two lots from the clay farm. The only thing that's a little bit different about it is part of this property is where the CSX railroad ran through it there along Kentucky Highway 300, and we're explaining a note there that that property has been abandoned by the railroad, and it refers back to the original property owner, which in this case would be Clay because that farm was owned by W.H. Yates, and that's who leased the property to the railroad. That's the only thing different, but other than that, we're just creating two tracks.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Right, the moves we approve. Sorry, Vince seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Item B, Bob and Janet Orms, Kentucky Highway 52. Any issues with this, Jenny?
This morning, Dale did bring new plats in. As you see, the owners did not sign here, but he did bring in the owner's signatures and the agency letter. All other corrections were made.
Okay. I'm gonna share with us what you're doing here, Dale.
The joiner, Steve Wardridge, is just purchasing a little bit of property at the rear of his property from Mr. and Mrs. Orms. It's three quarters of an acre, no road frontage. It's just it's being combined with Steve and Penny Wardridge's property.
Any questions or discussion on this item? Terry moves, we approve. Jeff seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous.
Thank you, all.
Thank you, Dale. Item three, final plat amendment, number one, fresh division, Perryville. Morning, Kendall. Howard with this, Jenny?
Well, this was brought to technical review as a minor plat and then resubmitted this week as a final plat amendment. Kendall made all the changes I requested. However, on the final plat amendment checklist, we will need a certificate or form number three added.
Which is form number three?
It's the letter of credit, the engineer's certificate, and then he'll need us to put zero there. The utilities were taken off, but not the form number three, so we'll just need to add that form.
Okay. That won't be a problem. We'll take care of that, and we will. That would require Earl Coffee's signature, but we'll share that with him and include the certificate on the plat and get his signature.
Okay. Wow. Briefly share, Kendall, what's happening?
Okay, yeah. Adam Gray, he's here with me today. He owns the property. He bought the property from the Battlefield Preservation Association. He bought the property as a whole, and his main goal here is to separate the mill building and put it on a separate lot. After we got into it, we realized that there was an old subdivision plat that still existed that had never really been done away with, and he's kind of still in the process of having the city of Perryville abandon that street right-of-way that runs through the center of the property. But as of today, what we're proposing to do is put the mill building on a separate lot. The rest of the property that he has titled to would be combined. And it, there was some confusion about what, how we should submit it. We originally turned in a minor plat. It turned out that a portion of the property was zoned NCC, and we would be violating something, one of your rules, to just take an NCC property and divide it into two pieces. So, we have shown it and presented it as a final plat, and it sounds as though I'm gonna need to include that extra certificate, which I'll request your all's approval of this plat contingent upon me getting that certificate included and signed off on.
Any questions, discussion?
I move to accept with addition of the certificate.
Okay. Second, David moves, we accept. Jeff seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve, with the condition of the certificate being included. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Kendall. Item four, final plat amendment, Tugglewood, Tuggle Road. Any issues with this, Jenny?
This was also submitted for technical review as a minor plat. However, I found that there was a final plat that existed, Tugglewood, so the engineer changed it to make it a final plat amendment. So, once again, this will need to have the certificate number three added by changing...
That concerns me, that the engineer's certificate, the, as a final plat amendment, they have done away with all, we, this body has done away with the utilities and restrictions, the availability and all that stuff that needs to be signed by the engineer and by the utility companies, and because there's no new infrastructure, no anything, we're just simply dividing a five-acre, almost six-acre track off of a 99-acre lot that was previously done as a final plat for the mere reason that it was more than five tracks, or five tracks or more, which, other than that, it would have met all the requirements of a minor plat other than the number of lots. Granted, it's recorded as a final plat. So, if this is a final plat amendment, and we're trying to expedite the process on making it easier to do final plat amendments that don't require utility signatures, then why do we have to put the infrastructure on there when there's no new infrastructure, which means that now you have to take it to the engineer simply to get him to put NA on there, not applicable, and sign it? What purpose does that serve? And I would say that planning and zoning, the staff was aware that this was going to be a final plat amendment at the technical review meeting. I was notified after turning it in as a minor plat, came up, filled out a final plat amendment application and checklist and turned that in. That was turned in prior to the TRS meeting, and I wasn't made aware. Now, my client happens to be in Bowling Green. I don't know if y'all remember Ms. Ramsey, the gentleman that accidentally shot himself. He was gonna shoot a groundhog in his farm. She's in Bowling Green. We had to drive to Columbia to get her to sign this, and had we been aware at the time that we needed this particular signature, we would have done it. But there again, my point is, is that why do you need the engineer to put NA on there and sign off it for assurity of a bond of infrastructure if there's no infrastructure or no roads, no water, no nothing? The final plat amendment, I mean, the final plat would have had to have addressed any of those issues. All we're doing is taking a 100-acre track off of this final plat, which evidently the stigma of a final plat is gonna follow each and every one of these tracks perpetuity for the rest of their lives, even if you buy a, and Lisa had commented that, well, it helps attorneys in the chain of title. The attorneys may use a plat as a, as something to show in, as far as ownership, but plats do not reflect ownership. They're not reflected, and you may refer to one in a chain. I've got plats that's recorded that you all approved, that a neighbor was gonna exchange property with other neighbor. Both neighbors signed the plat. The plat's recorded. They got mad at each other. They never deeded each other that property. That, I mean, it, just because there's a plat recorded doesn't mean, that doesn't constitute the transfer of property. Only a deed can do that. And if you go out and you look for, under the person's name that actually did the final plat amendment, or the final plat on Tugglewood, you won't find Tugglewood subdivision. It's recorded at the courthouse. It's recorded here.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Okay.
It's Tugglewood. So, I guess my question is, is, I understand, and Paula's gonna say, it's the rules that you have to have form three on there, but I...
We'll let Hart say what she wants to say.
Well, I mean, I just think that since, as everybody agrees, you're gonna put NA on there, and Kendall's got to go through the same process, that we weren't, you know, I think it's ridiculous, myself.
Okay. Thank you.
I think, and I'm gonna handle this just because of the complexity and how it's been presented, as far as this goes, it wasn't, each of the two plats that Mr. Wesley's referring to were submitted incorrectly.
Yes.
They were, they didn't meet the guidelines of the subdivision regulations. I think the planning staff sort of bent over backwards to work with the surveyors to accept applications late to get on the agenda for this meeting. We've done that. Our goal is to make sure they meet the checklist. You need to get form number three on the plat and sign for this to meet, and that doesn't take a trip to Bowling Green. Dwayne Campbell's right here in Boyle County. He can sign that form number three. It gives him an opportunity to look at the plat if he were to have anything to say or not say. If you can put that on the plat, it will be technically correct, and the plat could be approved with that condition today, and we could move forward and file the plat when that correction is made.
I would do that, but I didn't say Dwayne was in Bowling Green. I said my client's in Bowling Green.
We understand that.
So, that's, I will do that. I just wanted to...
Any other questions or discussion?
I'll make the motion with... Proper signatures.
Jeff moves, we approve.
I'll second.
Including the signatures that are needed to make it correct. Suzy seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. The motion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous.
Thank you.
Item four, site plans for Denny O' Manufacturing Minor Road. Morning, sir.
Morning.
Your name is?
My name is Milton Hammond. I'm with Danville Life Company.
Okay. Nice to have you. Thank you. Anything you want to share with this, Jenny?
He made all six corrections, and the other thing I'll share, where the building's gonna take over the parking, they're not only going to replace that parking, but add 47 additional spots above what is required. So, that's great, and all the changes are made.
Okay. Thank you. Would you like to share with us what you're doing here, please?
It's a proposed addition for manufacturing in Denny O'. I want to rep here is Mr. Joey Harris. It's a, again, proposed location of the new stamping facility they're considering putting in.
Any questions or discussion?
I'll make the motion, we approve.
Terry moves, we approve.
Second.
Jeff seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Thank you, sir. Under Chair Business, payment of bills. Questions about the bills?
What is LexisNexis, Paula?
Last year, we approved the credit card processing equipment. We finally got the bill, and we are paying that. Remember, it's a one-time fee forever. We won't ever pay any other fees or percents, and we will have credit card processing from here on on.
Make the motion, we pay the bills.
I'll second. Ever done a second?
Pay the bills.
Sorry about that. I went to close that door to kind of drown that conversation. Do we have a motion?
Yes, sir. We have a motion. Second.
Three seconds.
Okay. I didn't get who made what, so...
I made a motion.
Jeff moves, we approve.
Yes, sir.
And...
I second.
Suzy's second.
Suzy was the loudest. I wrote her down.
All right, anyway. We've had a motion and second to approve paying the bills. Question, discussion on that. Hearing none, all in favor, we pay the bills. Vote unanimous. March 2017 financial report. Any comments on this, Jenny or Paula?
Not really. Basically, year-to-date, our permits are up about $3,000 in expected, so that's good news, and everything is within the budget.
Make a motion to approve.
Clayton moves, we approve. Vince seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to approve financial report of March 2017. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Fee scheduling rate increase options.
You can, if you want me to.
Comments?
Well, I'll start, and Paula can add. Basically, if you look at the back, the cost of living adjustment for the Department for Local Government, last year was, well, this year is 2.1%. So, one option is to increase the fees 2.1% for the next year, or we could do it semi, you know, every two years and estimated maybe at 4.2% or less. That would have what the fees would be if we waited two years and up the fees. If we waited two years, you still wouldn't lose any money because, you know, we'd make 15 more this year, 15 more next year, or we could just wait two years and make 3,000. One advantage to doing it every two years, we still are getting older applications in. It takes a long time for the engineers, even after giving them new forms six times, to get the new rate sometimes. But it's up to you if we change this year or wait a year.
And this is something we talked about last meeting. You recommended presenting this, and so, of course, that 2017-19 is estimated. It's just assuming the same cost of living increase established this January at 2.1, and what Jenny did was just double that to create that estimate. And again, several years ago, it's probably been about 15 years ago, been a long time since our P&amp;Z rates had increased, so at the time, the Budget Committee recommended raising our rates, the cost of living annually. And like Jenny said, that's become a little difficult. I think maybe even our website, we've got someone helping us with our website, and some of our applications on the website, we haven't gotten them up after asking a couple of times, actually, several times. So, it's, it's just that by the time one year passes, we've then just got everybody used to using the new rate. And so, we're hoping maybe if you will accept that, maybe doing a rate increase by the cost of living, where we will take this year's cost of living and combine that next year and do like a bi-annual. But if you would prefer to do it annually, this would be the line 217 to 18 at the 2.10%. If you want to accept that as the new rate, starting July 1, effective July 1, that's what the rates would be. If you want to wait, they'll be readjusted next year after the cost of living is announced in January.
Have we done any research to what other communities or planning zoning commissions are charging for...
Well, this is just the way ours has been set up, and it is very difficult to compare Danville County planning and zoning to other communities. A lot of times, they're funded entirely by a city or a county for their payroll, which is our biggest expense. I think we're one of the few agencies that are totally separate from city and county, and we have a totally separate account. And so, our fees were set up several years ago to pay for the time and effort that is spent on an application where other agencies aren't required to support themselves. We're required to support ourselves, and so, at the time, it was decided since it would be a user fee, so someone who's building a house or a developer who's building is paying for that fee and passing that along to their customer. But our fees are higher, I mean, to answer your question simply, our fees are higher than most any other community is. But that's one of the reasons, is because we're responsible for supporting ourselves, and you can tell in that, you know, we still aren't getting the funding we're asking for for a, really a shoestring budget that we've presented.
Other questions?
I struggle personally with raising the fees with this economic situation as it continues to be, and I know we are hit from about, as citizens, every angle of more money being taken from us for taxes, various things, and so forth. I personally struggle with raising the fees at all at this time. That's, you know, just my opinion personally on that, not the opinion of the commission, but I just want to share my thoughts, and I would be in favor personally of leaving the fees as are, as they are, and maybe look at it again next year. And as Jenny or Paula once said, we don't lose any money really by not raising them at this time, so...
I personally would not be in favor.
Is there a projected loss for next, like, next year or the year after? Are we projecting the loss of change in revenue as it stands now?
No. Are you talking about from fees or from...
Yeah, if we didn't change the fees, let's say, would that mean that you would suffer some sort of a reduction of services, or we would be losing money?
Now, I think on the second, on the back page of that, the estimated increase from that is 1530, and like Jenny said, if you roll that in to another year, like, save up that cost of living figure and add that to the next year, you would recoup that revenue. But it's $1,530, so it's not a huge amount.
I concur with Chairman. I think the fees are, I think it would do well if we could not raise them.
Any other questions or comments? We're open for a motion.
So, make a motion, we keep our fees.
Jeff moves, we keep the fees as are.
I'll second.
Suzy seconds. Question, discussion on the motion to keep fees as are. Hearing none, all in favor, vote unanimous. Thank you. Terry, you want to report on that, please?
Yeah. First, I'm gonna briefly summarize a recent meeting that the Planning and Zoning Budget Committee had with representatives of the City Commission and County Fiscal Court. Then I'll ask for any additional input for those of you who attended the meeting, and then finally, I'm gonna make a few comments on the recently proposed city budget that contains additional funding for planning and zoning, understanding that that's a proposed budget. So, on Monday, April 17, the Budget Committee, along with Jerry Lieber, Clyde Mullins, and Jeffrey Baird, met with representatives of the Danville City Commission and the Boyle County Fiscal Court to discuss their desire to have the Planning and Zoning Office open five days a week. The major concern voiced by the city and county is that having the office closed on Fridays does not send the right message. The city and county representatives said that they were not necessarily asking that the office be fully staffed on Fridays, but that we consider either a staggered work schedule of all three employees to cover the five days, or just have the new director work five days. The Budget Committee restated the reasons why we believe that since the building permit activity is still roughly half of what it was prior to the Great Recession, and since we are not experiencing customer complaints, that the current four-day, five, fully-staffed work week provides the best overall level of service at the lowest cost of taxpayer. Now, on the subject of the city and county's request, the planning and zoning, keep the current total hours worked unchanged, but use a staggered work schedule to be open on Friday. Paula explained that each staff member has a specific area of expertise, and that they have tried staggered work schedules in the past, and that it reduced the department's ability to meet the needs of the building professionals. Building professionals account for about 75% of our interactions, and they need access to the full staff to ensure that their questions are answered when they do come into the office. Currently, office is fully-staffed four days a week and closed on Fridays. A staggered work schedule would result in the office only being fully-staffed two days a week and partially-staffed the other three days, which would reduce the level of service to the building professionals. On the subject of the city and county's request that the new director work five days a week, which would allow a fully-staffed office Monday through Friday, just as it is today, but only partially-staffed on Friday, previously, the Budget Committee has not recommended having just one of the office staff work five days a week, since it would require additional funding from the city and/or county, and the Budget Committee does not believe that the current office workload and lack of customer complaints warrant spending any additional taxpayer money to be partially-staffed on Friday. In the meeting, we were asked what the additional cost would be to be partially or fully-staffed on Friday. Paula estimated that having a new director work five days a week would cost an additional $11,000 a year, and to be fully-staffed five days a week would cost an additional $22,000 a year. And these are estimates only since the actual salary benefits of the new director will not be known until that individual is hired. Now, before I comment on where we might go from here, does anyone who attended the Monday, April 17, meeting have anything else to add to my summary? As to where we might go from here, the proposed city budget presented by Ron Scott to the City Commission Thursday night included an additional $12,500 for the city's portion of the expense to keep planning and zoning open five days a week. Respecting the city and county's desire to have planning and zoning open five days a week, and with the possibility that additional funding for planning and zoning may be included in the city and/or county's final budgets, what I would suggest is that after the city and county budgets have been finalized, and after the new director has been hired, the Budget Committee would set down... Budget Committee would sit down again then with the new director and discuss the final budget and whether or not it would fund partial or full staffing of the Planning and Zoning Office on Fridays. The results of that discussion then would be reviewed with and discussed by the full Planning and Zoning Commission. So that's my thoughts on that.
Comments? Clyde, anything?
No, I was there. Nothing to this point.
I might say something.
Vince?
Yeah, just that, you know, I talked to some people, citizens, and, you know, any business that we use on a, you know, nobody shops all in the same day. And that's my only concern about it, is the fact that people don't have access like they would have to police department or something, you know what I mean? Or any other services that we offer as a city and county government, of which we are related to, not controlled by, so to speak. But at the same time, I feel that, you know, if you need to go to the store, like, for instance, if I knew how to use a hammer really well, which I don't, and I decided on Thursday that I wanted to apply to do my work on the weekend as a citizen, we wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't be able to do it for another week at least, if you could get to the Planning and Zoning, you know what I mean, on those other days. I don't... These are small scenarios, but they are a concern. And, you know, those people that do their own work, and of course, we want the building professionals to have what they need, and I think they can speak for that more than I can. But I'm just thinking about the people that I see that apply for permits, and then they do the work themselves and stuff, you know, and trying to get a permit on the last minute, which I know is a small portion of people, but you'd have to not get it. And then you'd have to, if it was something like your roof is leaking, and you had to do it yourself, well, you have to go up there and put plastic on your roof or something, you know what I mean? That's only concern. I mean, it's a... Maybe it's, you know, 3% of the people that would be doing something, but it's just something to think about. That's it.
Questions? Anything else? Discussion on the report?
I'd like to reiterate, I think the committee... What I got from the meeting, the committee meeting, was that the Budget Committee was in concurrence and agreement with the wishes of the city and county, if they determined and desired for us to be open five days a week, as long as we could have the funding to do so.
Paula, if we went to five days, is that a 37 and a half or 40-hour work week?
It's a 30... Well, prior to our extended hours, which was a request of the previous City Commission, our personnel policy is a 37 and a half work week. So unless you adjust that, it would stay 37 and a half, but...
I just, I wasn't sure on that, and I somehow heard 40 and heard 37 and a half, so I just thought I'd...
Well, I think 40 is just thrown out because that's standard for a lot of industry, but I believe most of government agencies, if I'm not mistaken, are about 37 and a half.
Okay. Just for my information, do you know if the rest of the city employees that physically work in this building, they'd 37 and a half also?
I believe so, but I haven't verified that.
I talked to someone, and they do. You're here 8:30 to 5:00, and you clock out an hour for lunch, so 37 and a half.
Standard 37 and a half.
Yes, in the building.
Just FYI. Mr. Meyer, yes, or Mr.?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, lady, it dawns on me that we probably need some more equalization among the gender here.
I'm perfectly fine.
Okay. And I'm confident you can hold your own. Totally confident of that. Point of clarification, if I may, and thank you all for your service. Mr. Manot, if I heard you correctly, if the city and the county voted to increase your budget to service the community five days a week, if I heard you correctly, you would then take that into deliberation to determine whether or not the commission would in fact be open five days a week. Is that correct? Is that what I heard?
We would certainly, we would bring it back to the commission so that we could have a motion and deal with it as a commission. I don't think the Budget Committee can make that decision by ourselves.
But it seems to me that if the city and the county committed in our budget to fund you to do five days a week...
I can't think of any reason why we wouldn't.
Okay. That's what I needed clarification on. Thank you.
And to follow up, I don't see any reason why we couldn't either. Yeah, I think the Budget Committee would bring that back to us as a recommendation, and we'd have a motion to follow up and approve that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from anyone? From the audience? Anybody on that? Terry, thank you for that report. I don't know that we need a motion to do anything at all on that unless somebody thinks we do, but we appreciate the report and thank the Budget Committee for the time they've taken to study this and consider what we need to do to make a decision on that.
Thanks, Terry. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into executive session at this time.
To discuss the hiring of a new director, I hope?
Yes, sir.
All right. And just anybody's taking notes, I think it's KRS 61.810F, if our attorney has informed me correctly and I wrote it down correctly, but we do, for the commission's information, I do try to go with KRS, stay by the rules. So have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll second.
Susie seconds. All in favor? Thank you. We will go into executive session in a few minutes. Anybody needs to take a...
I make a motion, we come out of executive session.
Exactly.
Or go back into regular session.
Okay. Jeff moves. We go back into regular session out of executive. Vince seconds it. Question, discussion. All in favor? Vote unanimous. We have had extensive discussion about the recommendation for hiring a new director, and we have interviewed several candidates, excellent candidates that we did interview, and we're really pleased with that. And if the commission is ready to make a motion, the chair is open to accept it.
I make a motion, Chairman, I need to state, I make a motion that we hire Mr. Stephen R. Hunter to be our new director of planning zoning for Danville, Boyle County.
And I would second that.
Moves have been made to hire Stephen Hunter as our new next director for Danville Volcanic Planning and Zoning. Susie seconds that. Question, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote unanimous. Any other good for the order? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Jeff moves to adjourn. Clyde?
Excuse me, excuse me. Chairman, with great regret, I have to mention this. We all know, if we've listened to the news, there's been a lot of saber rattling back and forth, and I work with the defense industry. You've taken the time to appoint me to the Beautification Committee, to which my wife just jumped up and down and really enjoyed, and I would really love to serve on that committee. However, I'm needed on Mondays at a different location to support a warfighter, and they've called up a contractor we have that is doing 180 days, which both I have mixed emotions about, but that is my business, and I would remain open to serve on any committee and even that committee if this responsibility were to fall to the wayside at the business I consult with. So I apologize for that, but I needed to make you aware of that.
Okay.
And since I have not attended a single beautification committee as of yet, that's a great regret that I let the commission know that. I'm sorry.
Paula, do you know how often that meets or when?
Once a month on the first Monday of the month.
Okay, and that's conflict with your clients?
The Monday is the issue, yes. And I didn't know that until just recently. I remain aware of that. I apologize for taking your time to appoint me today, but I still remain open otherwise outside of Monday.
If anybody wants to volunteer to take Clyde's place on that until he's more available, you're certainly more than welcome to do so.
And or for a short period of time, if there's any way I could serve in a, in essential with notes or minutes or anything else, I'd be very willing to do that. It's just that I know that that's not the norm.
Okay. That's nice. All right. If anybody wants to do that, then let us know. All right. All right. Any other good for the order? It's not Jeff's made a motion to adjourn. Susie's seconded. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.